United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apologize for the late start.
So Matt McKenzie is the IU, John Coralja, Matt had given good reach out about a software package program that I'm going to let you explain that he was piloting and thought that it would fit our needs here in Berwick. So Matt's going to give a little bit of his credentials, his little bit of background, and then he's going to explain how we can use his software.
So yeah, I'm Matt McKenzie. I reached out to IU Director a few months ago. I've got a history in, was in the Navy for a long time. I worked, I served as a Director of Operations at a primary school district. So I know a lot of the challenges that everybody faces in terms of how to efficiently utilize your resources. So I'm here to try and help tell the story about where we're right now and also show you a tool that really helps you show the different scenarios to accomplish whatever the objectives on the board is. So I just started off, you know, I'm not telling anything you don't know. Looking at the seven municipalities, I could rise Berwick area school district, over the last 21 years, we see declining birth rates, numbers of birth every year. So these are, when you look, when you look at those birth rates in terms, in terms of the cohort of the rising kindergarteners, we see that about 10% decline in that time for the kindergarten, basically per class for the elementary school program. A little better if you hear me? A little bit better back there? I'm used to teaching, so I'm, I'm used to looking at the very back of the room. As long as people can hear me, usually okay. Right, do both here. So in the last 10 years, we see that the total district enrollment came as well declined from about 2,900 in 2013 to 20, to a little over 2,500 in 2023. So when you look at the live births every year and look at those, the past enrollment, we can project those annual cohort survival, use that method to project the enrollment every year for the different grade levels. And so we'll see that it should, the enrollment should continue to decline overall to below 2,500 or so. So it looks like we're past that inflation group. So really what, what I'm trying to do is kind of marry up modern business analytics, business intelligence with an application to show you, to really tell the story of what's going on. We use the Esri ArcGIS system. We program in the addresses of where all the students live. So we are all the K to 12 students, enrollment by school, you know, on the left-hand side. So we can play with the, the different scenarios to kind of, if we want to update the assignments for different schools, we see then how those totals per school could end up being...
And they know it's hard for them to read in the back. The green is Salem, the yellow is West Berwick, and the purple is...
Sure. So the purple is, sorry, let me get to the right. So green is, so green is Salem Elementary School students, orange is West Berwick, purple is Neskupack. So the circles are the K to four students, the triangles are the fifth grade students that are assigned to the middle school. So this is just an application, just to tell you, show you what's going on. We can use it for, to adjust enrollments. We look at just, we can look at just kindergarten enrollment, say, and also all, all K to, all K to four students. So when we use that application in the past, kind of just here are the screenshots of where all the students, all the students lived. Again, purple for Neskupack, green for Salem, orange for West Berwick. That was just, this shows you the, the area just north of the bridge. We see there's, there's many neighborhoods where there's several students assigned to different schools within just a block or so of each other. Could be different grade levels though. So this is what it would look like if, if we want to say add 100 students to Neskupack so that they would have the same average utilization rate as Salem and West Berwick. So of course, we would need to bring students from the north side of the bridge. And this district-wide bridge right here would be students from, from the area between West Berwick and Salem, more than likely go into, go into Neskupack. And here's a kind of blow up of that, of that neighborhood north of the, north of the bridge. But this would be up to the Board Administration where the students would come from. I just playing with the system just to see maybe logically where that would be going. So this tells the story, if we were to have two equal-sized schools, and if all the students from south of the bridge in the Neskupack region would go to Salem, we wanted to have the same utilization rate across between Salem and West Berwick. And here the orange will be West Berwick. It does seem like the natural border would be Grand Park Street. Here's that area just north of the bridge. Green Salem, orange West Berwick. So this would get the utilization rate approximately like 90% or so. Right now it does look like Neskupack is about 45%. We get all the classrooms and the children.
Sorry, dinner. It looks like there's definitely kids that could probably be walking to Salem, but not bicycle to West Berwick.
So, you know, when you look at the application, that's something that we would certainly consider. One of the things that we can see is, the yellow are all the addresses that are within one mile. And, sorry, this is one, one driving distance mile. So there's probably just a few more, the blues would be yellows for walking distance, for the one mile walking distance. So there are a few students real close to the bridge that are, that should be bus, I don't know if they are bus now, but they're more than a mile away. That's a good question. This is something that we can see with the, with the programs. The program just really enables good strategic planning, it's decision support, it provides actionable information really so we can really figure out what students should go where. We could click on each, each address and see things like make sure that the siblings would be going to the same school. If there's any, I think it says second language concerns, for example, we can make value decisions by sending them to the right school so that capacity is already seen anywhere. Does that answer your question? See that, were those...
Because I know for a fact, I've seen bus stops on Chester Street that make it easily walk to Salem.
Yeah, I don't know if there's, one of the things we've added to this is a layer for, if there's any hazardous routes, if there's any streets that they don't want them to cross, or we'd also do things like add crossguard locations. You can do those so that it's safer for the students. And we'd also put bus stops as well. Any other questions? However, we can see with the application.
So, just so the Board mentions, like, so from a planning purposes, from an administrative role, is this what you're saying, if there's a, if you go back to that one slide where you have a catchment, or it's just the two between the two buildings, even, the green and the yellow, you know. So I know it's on the agenda tonight to talk about what we're doing about Neskupack, but if we stayed, of course, of what we're doing right now, that, that natural line where you said, which is Market Street, this, you know, you kind of have an overlay area in the middle there that would be a catchment area, and then all of those families in that area, in essence, you know, they would know that they're in, in this catchment area, and we would be able to move students one way or the other, depending on, on our staffing, so that we don't have to hire more, or be worried if we have more staff, then, then what do we do about, about the actual staff? It's a planning tool. It's obviously something like in county-based, in county-based areas, or, or much larger school districts, where you have so many more elementary schools, or high schools, or middle schools, or whatever, that it's, it's a useful tool. But just in our zone area, it is, it is a helpful tool. Just what you said about utilization in, in, in the buildings, it would be both of these buildings, about eighty, not, what'd you say, eighty?
Ninety percent.
Anybody else have any questions?
Have you looked at who it centers? There's all K, one, two together, three, four, five.
Well, I mean, in that case, my question was directed at me. In that case, then the whole district would be going, you know, all the kindergarten, first graders, we were all Berwick, you know, yeah, so.
If we, if we all got losing 100, 200 kids in the next, you know, five, 10 years, I mean, is a good way to pool resources, all your kindergarteners or you have all your first grades?
It is. It is. There's, I know with every change, you know, there's just, there's just a shift in, there's just a shift in delivery of service. But that's definitely a model.
I mean, I suggest that the last two years, looking at that before it closed the building.
It's still a model that could be achieved with just two buildings though. Because if you can have all your students in these two buildings, you can still achieve that same model with just two buildings.
You still apply stops in Chester Street?
What's that?
You still apply stops in Chester Street?
Well, it would be different because you would have all K1 and 2, all grade levels going to one building.
Right, yeah. You gotta see it plus as a minus.
Right. That's what I said. It's a definite, that's modeling. Thanks. Thank you very much. Um, well, depending, you know, we, we kind of held off on the school calendar because we weren't sure what, what summer projects we were going to potentially be having. But, but we do, we do have a proposed school calendar that I wasn't quite exactly ready to share. But it does involve, I just wanted to be able to discuss it with you. It does involve, and this is after discussion, even though, you know, the, the association doesn't have a say, but we do try and communicate with teachers about the greatest needs of the students. And we had discussed teachers coming back August 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. Everybody would be off on Monday, August 26th, students would come for four days, 27th, 28th, 29th, and 30th. And then the following would be later day. I think one of the other questions that we had talked about was the fair. It is September 20th this year, so it's very early. In our area, we have Bloomsburg, who obviously cannot function with the Bloomsburg Fair being open. Central School District does close, but all the other school districts that send to CMABTS are all in session of, of some sort. Three days is the average. I'd want to say, don't hold me to this, but Southern might go to school four days and only have one day off, or they might have switched back. I'm not 100%. It's, they're all either three, if possibly one of them going to school for four days. So our proposal right now is three days in school with, with two days off during the fair. We would have the FID days built in, or not built in, but FID days available, and no longer building in the five days of snow days. But we're going to continue to roll with that and that kind of figure. I just want to put that out there. That was one of our, one of our next discussions that's going to happen. If anybody wants to contact them.
I had something on that topic as well. I did write the note back in November to get this. I said it at the public meeting back then. So I'll share it with all the Board members, could share it with the entire Board, the right, wouldn't do. What I did was attendance analysis for week before, after, and during fair. Involves absences for students, teachers, and administrators, based upon figures. You can see the last couple of days of data picked up on Wednesday and Thursday. I mean, it's basically based on data. There's an argument that had Wednesday through Friday.
I think the data that we presented at the time too, Mr. Heskey, you did your right to know, was that we actually have more absences in March than we do during the month of September, which might be something that we would like to consider somewhere as a spring break.
We're talking about.
Or just something to, to reset.
And those are right here too, so these numbers are possible. Who knows? But that was a data ride, and I'm just sharing it with everyone because that's the facts that there are, so I will have.
Yeah, we can hang on to that for next time we can fix.
Any other discussion on the calendar? Athletics have anything?
The only thing we had is, I guess, went about the coaches, about Coach Swingle. We had, we applied, put an ad out for girls, everybody knows the PIAAA was girls sanction issue. We had the first, first time I ever heard girls wrestling. We had a $2,000 assistant coach that would apply. So Ron, the head coach, been doing most of the work in his, in his assistants, had to go to the tournaments. His last year, they were on different days. This year, they're on the same day. So his, both his assistants have been, you know, taking some time off. So we decided to give that $2,000 stipend, $1,000 to Ron, and then $500 to each Mark Bellis and Gate Walker. That would be a tough, tough bridge. I just have a little, I don't have much. I just have a little update on some of the sports. For swimming, mallet drive, both 100 breaststroke leader record, and a pole record. Their districts are coming up Friday, not until March 1st and March 2nd. Voice basketball is ranked seeded sixth at the, at the moment. We still have one game left. Their playoff will be next Tuesday, the 20th. Girls' basketball will rank at fourth seeding right now, and their playoff game will be, quarterfinals will be next Wednesday. Wrestlers took second in District 2, team events up in Bloomsburg. Last weekend, they have individual districts start next weekend, the 23rd and 24th at, at Bloomsburg. We have a, a rifler who is, he shot a 404 and placed sixth in our league. They take the top 10 and go to state, so he will be going maybe tomorrow or Wednesday if we don't go. So that's just the update on the sports. Nothing else. I guess the nothing's really been started. It's just kind of, it's, it's, drop it off.
Well, I got a thing. Based upon recent events, I mean, we all read the newspaper and stuff. We do a policy for booster activity, what is expected when you're raising funds on behalf. Based upon that, I suggest that we probably should have a sit-down of all of our booster clubs to say, to have a chat of what behavior is and isn't expected of anyone here representing our district, our kids. Furthermore, we think we should look at amending the policy to exclude alcohol at all school-related functions, or I mean, on district property, off district property.
I mean, I think that's a great idea. The, the fortunate thing that happened, I think that would be great to be, but all, we can meet all at once or individually, maybe they have different ideas, but to set some guidelines and them for the following, where I know they're a different entity, but they have to follow, they definitely have to follow.
Right, but they're affiliated, they represent us, they represent our kids.
Right, absolutely. I think that's a great idea for them to come in and hear your point, hear their points, and kind of come to, to an agreement, for sure.
So how do we do that, Mr. Yost? Do you want to, do we want to meet, I mean, who do we want to meet with first? Because I think we should meet first before we meet with the booster club. And who should that involve?
The certain boosters are probably PDA's too. You go for one, you should go for all.
But as far as meeting, I think probably you need some board level.
Yeah.
I would suggest not the athletic committee.
No, I mean, if you're going to involve all the activities, I don't know if you want to, that's why if anyone...
Oh, I mean, not just, not just athletics.
Right. If you're going to do it, you need to all of them. So it's not necessarily specifically athletics.
So wait, what I'm asking though is, are we doing a meeting specifically with the football booster club?
I suggest that all of them. This is a reminder for the Zen policy that they...
Only, well, that is, the boosters only, wrestling, basketball, two basketballs.
And then you have...
There's a lot of actors.
Um, but they're small.
And then you have all the PDA's too. Like you have Pine, you have the...
And then a policy meeting to...
Probably should revise the policy, look revise the policy.
Before you meet, yeah.
As an athletic committee or as a...
Well, because that go through policy, there's policy committee.
I mean, alcohol is probably the part. I mean, there's a time and place, and we have to have school visits, and the time and place. Not a group, and I know who knows. Definitely that through, there's a time, there's a place. Any other discussion for athletics?
Well, Mr. Heskey, do you have that issue you wanted to bring up with him?
I'll talk to Brian about that.
No. So on the agenda is an item that was proposed actually to the previous school board about the camera system that we're using. So on this agenda, we had listed the cost of sharing the installation of that. So we asked Salem, not the installation piece of it, not the system, but Salem had approached us if we would share the cost. And so I put it on the agenda. You can vote as you want, but I needed to have it on the agenda so that they can move forward. And then I asked Salem, please, to step forward and do a little discussion about it. So I'm not sure which one, Tom, or it'd be you or...
I guess me. So we met with the Board last year about gunshot detection that we installed. The detection costs, I believe it was 45,000 and some change. So what it is, is there is 19 microphones that are placed throughout East Berwick. So what that does is anytime it hears a gunshot, it will alert an officer. It could be our officers, Berwick, school police, anybody that has access, police-wise, have access to our information. And it sends an alert within 10 seconds of it hearing a gunshot. Now, again, there are 19 microphones scattered throughout East Berwick. Along with that, we installed five plate readers, license plate readers. So what that does is, along with, we also installed four pan-tilt zoom cameras that there's going to be one, there's one at Line Street and East 8th, one in the back of the middle school parking lot, one at Central and East 11th, and the other one is installed in the track. So what those do is anytime a gunshot goes off, those cameras automatically go to the direction of where the gunshot is heard. They're able to triangulate and figure out within about 30 feet of where the gunshot actually went off at. So any vehicles leaving the area, they will take pictures of people, vehicles, anything that it can gather for evidence-wise. Along with the license plate readers, what they do is they only capture license plate that's go by, that goes by. So they don't run anything, they don't capture people, they only, their job is to capture a picture of every license plate that goes by. And also, it's just a database that comes up. So like we have one on 10th Street, right outside of Central Ave. So everybody that goes by, it gathers what plate went by. It'll give you make, model, and year, color of the vehicle. So if, again, somebody, we can always look back on that. I think it holds for 30 days. The cameras, they're live all the time. Everything is up except one camera at this point, and that's in the track at this time. We're waiting on a transformer to come in. What they do, we can manipulate them, anybody, any police officer can manipulate them, move them a certain direction. If we're having problems at the admin building, at the Salem Elementary, we're able to move those cameras, zoom in and out, see what, you know, whatever we want to see as of crime-wise. The microphones... The microphones, they are on a pole and they're probably on 10 or 12 foot poles. The only thing that they record is high frequency noises. So a lady came to us and said, hey, there's one installed in my front yard. If I need the police, can I just go out and say, hey, I need help? They don't record any kind of voice. The only thing they record is high frequencies. And again, it just looks for that certain frequency. And they're supposed to be so accurate, they can tell the difference between a gunshot and a firework. So we implemented them around the school based off of that incident that we had last year at the track, where the teenage kids from Hazelton stole a car, came down here to meet somebody in Berwick, ended up coming to the track and drove through the fence, drove around the track a couple of times. Basically, when they drove through the fence, they disabled the car, got out, and I think it was, they fired three shots at that car. One ended up going across Johnson Ave and striking a tire on the other side. So, and we didn't find out until the next day or a couple of hours later, and we lost all valuable evidence of who was in the area, not a lot of great camera footage from that area. So for, it gives us a little bit more response time to get anywhere that, that there's a problem. So ultimately, we, we, the township incurred that cost of the 45,000. It's a yearly, it's a yearly subscription. The township is paying that 45,000 every year for all that in this East Berwick area. It will cover the Salem Elementary, the high school and the middle school. I believe what was on the agenda was for $3,500. So what it is, is when we go to place those condor cameras, the PTZ cameras on the poles, they need direct wired. Well, when we went to do it, there was a timer, I guess, for the lights out there, since they were going on the poles around the school. They're all set on timers. We had to move them to photo sensors. So the lights would kick on at night, because we need constant power. The lights would kick on at night instead of just on the timer. So that ended up costing us 3,500, or I think it was somewhere in around six or 7,000. We were just asking if you guys would be willing to split the cost with the township for that.
Thank you. Was there any questions on that?
Are those cameras specifically monitoring our schools?
So, yes, they are. The one on, the only one that can, the two that can really see outside the school would be the one at the front of the middle school and the one at Eighth and Line Street. They can get the intersection there, same thing, they can get 11th. They're not able to get anywhere else because ultimately they're mounting on a pole, so they can only swivel so many degrees.
Do you have one on Front Street too?
Yes, we have a plate reader on Front Street. There's one on Front Street and then we have one on, down by the Macon Aqua Bridge is another one. And then we have two more back behind the power plant.
So is the 30, is that for just what's covering the district or is that just half of what's for the entire project?
The 3,500 is just for the district. And those, I forgot to say, those license plate cameras, they also let us know if there's a sex offender, a wanted person, a terrorist. Pretty much what it does is NCIC, it's a national crime database, puts in there, so if you have a warrant for your arrest, it puts in there that Joe Smith operates a vehicle with plate A, B, C, D, 1, 2, 3. And it hits on that and it says, okay, Joe Smith could possibly be using that vehicle. So we're able to notify if there's a warrant, like I said, sex offenders hanging around the school, it'll let our guys know that that's all around the school.
Are any of these around West Berwick?
No, no, because only Salem is funding this project. So we're only funding in Salem Township.
Any other questions?
It's Tom. I'm just on the budget, huh? Oh, Joe, I thought you said Jill.
Good.
Sorry.
Well, it's okay.
I'm Joe Caputo, I'm with School Business Consultants, I'm the business manager consultant for the district. So probably a week and a half or so ago, you should have received a financial packet through December 31st, which kind of shows where you're at budget to actual. We were able to supply this, we just got your audit sent over to your auditors for 6/30/23. They're currently working on that. If there's any adjustments, we'll make them. But just to go over how we, what to really look at this, when we put this together, we also include the prior year. From an analytics standpoint, it's always good to gauge how you're trending to the prior year or something's different. If you could kind of dive down a little bit. On the revenue side, to date, at, well, not to date, through December 31st, you're at $32 million. It's 330,000 more than the prior year. And that's net, but there are some big fluctuations when we look at this, we highlight them. So real estate taxes, when you look at it compared to last year, you're up about 1.3 million. That's typical when you raise taxes in school district, obviously it's going to go up, so that says something there. Delinquent real estate taxes, you're behind about 270,000 roughly when you look at it to the prior year. We talked with the county, this is a potential issue across the board. They're having some cash flow issues, so it's, it's a two month lag right now, so you're able to identify that. Obviously, it's coming in, it's just coming in at a slower rate.
Two months is better than what it has been in the past.
What's that?
Two months is better than what it has been in the past.
Yeah, right, yeah, so I guess this is a comment.
Unfortunately.
Interest, you're up 315,000 as of December compared to last year. Obviously, everybody knows interest rates spiked, you were almost under 5% for 2223, which is phenomenal. So you received 499,000 in that, that time last year, you were only at 184,000. When you look at idea revenue, you're behind 662,000, it's a big fluctuation, but it's really just due to the timing. You submit for that, when you spend it, when you get it, so by the end of the year, you'll have it. So it's nothing to worry about. State subsidy is up 726,000, but if you look at what your allocation was from the state, you're up a million dollars in subsidies. So that's why that increases there. Rental subsidy up 2.3 million, 1.8 of that, if you guys remember, was that prior year reimbursement. That's the amount that you guys got refunded on those bond payments. Remember the big money that was coming in, the 1.8, so that's, that's what that represents.
Plan Con.
Exactly. You get that reimbursed on your bond, right?
This board is not aware of.
Oh, okay, they're not aware of that.
Well, they're not aware that we, we hadn't filed for it timely.
Okay, so.
From like four or five years ago.
Plan Con was through PE, when you do a capital project, they used to, they reimbursed you so much on that project. It's kind of at the wayside now, they're not really funding it as much, but you guys were grandfathered in from a previous project. So the way it works is as you made your bond payment every year, based on your aid ratio, when you submit your bond payment and that number, you get X percent back. So apparently, over the years, the district was not filing those with the state, so you were at a backlog of receiving 1.8 million. Those are now done and you just got your money. Okay, so it all came through in the 2223 school year. So that, that explains that. So basically, that's what we do on the revenue side, right? You're up 330,000, but we like to talk about those fluctuations. And really, it's a good tool for you guys to look at to kind of see where you're running budget actual as well. On the expense side, when you look at it, a little different, salaries are down when you look at year over year, but you had one extra payment last year, so it kind of makes sense. But they're still down a little bit due to staffing, which makes sense that your benefits are also down. So when you look at this, they kind of correlate, okay? So total expenses are up about 786,000. Huge fluctuation is in the 500s, which is largely due to a VOTAC project. So I don't know if the board's aware, but you guys, you guys are paying cash for a project that's done at Columbia, Montour. It was about 3.6 million dollars. So you're paying cash for that. So this year, you've already paid 1.8 million towards that, when last year you were, you only paid 500. So I think you have like another 300 or 400,000 dollar payment and then it's fully funded and you're done. But you guys did pay cash for that project as opposed to potentially looking at borrowing money. So when you look at that, that's kind of a thrust. I know there was some conversation that came out about the 4,000s about property. I think Mr. Yost maybe mentioned it about vehicles and the coding. So in the part, I typically wouldn't have put that there. It should have probably went, if it was a maintenance vehicle, I think it was a van. But if you were to do that, you would put it in the category, like say, maintenance is 2,600, you'd put it there, 750. I don't think it was a budget, it would, it would have had no impact, because it still hits your expense. But I think there are times, I think what happened with this, why it wasn't even budgeted. I think there was a van that you guys had that wasn't in the past inspection. So in turn, you had to go ahead and buy one off floor, so you incurred some expense. It was unbudgeted, but it was a one time, one time expense.
It was, it was too much for the repairs.
For what it was probably worth, yeah. So, you know, when you, when you look at this in total, your revenues over your expenditures at the end of December is 10.9 million to date. So that's where you're at from a financial perspective. You know, this, this will be something that every month, it should be something that, you know, you, you guys do look at, so you kind of see where you're trending, and we could always talk about it too. But essentially, that's where you're at to date, which is, you know, in the prior year, you were at 11.4 million. So you're only like 500,000 behind, but a lot of that is due to timing investor funds. So COVID money for new board members, the district received probably about, in total, 10.9 million. So there's been, every year, so this year, 2324 is the last time we're going to see those funds. Once they fall off, they're no longer in your budget. So even when you made money a little bit last year, that did help, because you may have offset some salaries, you did some one time projects, but eventually that's not going to be in your budget. So it's all going to be, it all has to be spent by September of 2024 for the investor money. So moving forward in your 2425 budget, that really will matter a lot there.
So in these, in these expenditures, something that we kind of can't get rid of, even though they're unfilled, or exclusive subs, which we have 12 of those, we have day to day subs. Parent educators now moving forward is 2425, but for that budget year, it was 12 unfilled. We had our ALC position that was unfilled for half a year. You know, we had a reading specialist that was unfilled for a full year.
Which correlates directly to why your salaries are down, right?
Right, I mean, so I can explain those salary misses, but like in, because you're in other school districts. I mean, you have to budget for those subs, even though they're not filled, because like.
Typically, salaries are usually a little bit conservative. You know, you always want to be conservative on a salary, because you could have, you know, even sabbaticals go out, right? But if you have some, it's on sabbatical, you're paying that, plus you're paying long term sub, double healthcare costs. So there's things that are unplanned, so you should be slightly conservative in that area. So, I mean, I, I don't really know how many people, like you said, but I didn't create that budget. But moving forward, what we would do is sit down with all the salaries and then we would allocate based on, you know, past history. I would look at sabbaticals, I would look at FPLAs, I would look at long term subs, and I would count a certain dollar threshold to, to put in there as well.
So moving forward, the departments are completing their budgets, Joe and I were just talking about this earlier. We're going to start scheduling the times that they're going to meet with us, well, really, you know, meet with you as well and just start loading that in and start moving forward with the actual budget, the 2425 budget as soon as possible.
Any questions regarding that, if you guys have any questions, or anything confusing, or part of the person that you've seen. If there's any question, go ahead and answer it. No?
No.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm sure you've already seen my report and all this, highlight a couple of quick things. I just want to mention, Wendy had brought this to my attention and somebody had asked about this board, the Veterans Monument that used to be at the track. So, long story short, I tracked down where it is. It's not at the Veterans Club, it is at Catawba Monument. And Catawba Monument was waiting to hear from the Vets Club, there was a gentleman that was in charge of it, for what they wanted done. That person that was in charge of it is really no longer there at the Vets Club and I guess not in the greatest health, so it kind of got forgot about. So that Veterans Monument is at, is at Catawba Monument, waiting for somebody related to the veterans to tell them what they want to do. So, just so you know, a lot of people were wondering where it was at, so they could go visit. And tonight, on the agenda is to vote on the, the last two thirds of the high school roof. It's, it's to send out a letter of intent to award pending the budget for that. I know Mrs. Kupsky has said before that the, the money is appropriated for that and whatnot. So if we do send them a letter of intent, since it is a large project, it's the, it's the last two thirds of the roof, probably by the end of March, we would want to get them a PO, because then that only gives them April, May then to secure materials. And they would start pretty much right away after the kids are out. So sometime in June, beginning of June, they would start and it will take them all summer and into October to finish it. So we want to start in June, because I don't want to get into November with roofing stuff because of the weather. So if we can start in June and finish in October, it would be advantageous for us. Any questions?
Andrew. Mrs. Post, do you have anything to say, saiu?
January is, as we all know, senior director's recognition hunt. And as a thank you for service, they gave each one of us a wooden book stand and a block. Seven habits of highly effective people. And the wooden book stands were made by the IU Work Foundations. And they have two young boys come in and talk to us and tell us what they do at the Work Foundation. It was very interesting. And also, the, the air complimentary of Pam Hagland, who's Director of Special Education, they mentioned on that. The IU also got a $379,000 grant to develop an apprenticeship program to kind of try and get teachers or aides to become teachers and do something with our teacher shortages in Pennsylvania. The Certified Teacher Registered Apprenticeship Program in Pennsylvania aims to train paraprofessionals and teacher aides who want to become certified elementary or secondary teachers. If anybody's interested in the application, call YU.
Mrs. Post, we actually, right, Pam, how many do we have of our aides?
So we have one that's currently in the program and we have four more on the list. So I'm very proud of our aides for reaching out their interest, and we are hopeful that we can get all of them through the program.
Yeah, it's called EARN, EARN, as you learn, an opportunity for these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Post. Is there any other policy committee this round?
No, we'll be busy next month.
VOTAC.
I'll go, John, will you go?
Go ahead.
It was a pretty, you know, simple meeting, wasn't much major on the agenda. It was, and then one of our nice snow days. Basically, the thing that they really had going on was last Sunday, the 4th, they had their annual house. I actually attended with my family, it was a very well attended event, all received. I'm actually moving this, come out, come out.
Some wanted approval of board minutes. Need a motion to approve the board minutes for the meeting on January 6th.
Need a motion to approve the board minutes for the meeting on January second.
A favor? Opposed? Eyes have it.
Going into the meeting. She didn't. You didn't miss anything, but we're going into the end.
All right.
So approval of the minutes, that's our, maybe the start of the regular meeting. Call back to order and continue. Next item, a motion to approve special board meeting minutes from January twenty-second. Can I get a motion? A favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. Next, we have budgetary transfers. Do you get a motion to approve those? Anybody have any questions? Can you give a second? A favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. Actually, I have a presentation of bills. It'll be roll call vote. Anybody have any questions on bills? Can we get a motion to approve?
Or a motion.
Second? A favor? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Eisenhower? Mr. Hattler?
Yes, except for a ten thousand, five hundred dollar payment to AEM and Capital Fund Melon.
Mrs. DeFerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mrs. Muir?
Yes.
Mr. Nespoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mr. Yost?
Yes.
Mrs. Kupsky, Mrs. Kupsky, so you can come in.
Um, I will leave my brief. I just wanted to tell everybody that the state of education report is out for Pennsylvania. I think over the last couple of years, I've done a little bit more in-depth presentation on it. Today, I'll just tell you the update of the three top challenges facing school districts. Is student mental health needs, staffing shortages and constraints, as well as budgetary pressures and funding issues. Those are the, are the top three. The staffing continues to be in the top three. And so does, so does mental health. Previously, it was building structures and budget pressures. Now that ESRS funding is going away, that's becoming something that's more, more of an issue. About the budget, Governor Shapiro delivered his second budget address. And so last year, actually, Mr. Pudo addressed that. School districts received more funding from the state. Again, one of my reviews of the Pennsylvania budget is that historically, Pennsylvania school districts are not funded as well as other states fund, fund their public education. So once again, the basic education funding, BEF, one point one billion is proposed. Nine hundred million is proposed to first-year adequacy investment, two, two hundred million through the basic ed funding. Special education, which is on the rise since, since the pandemic, an additional fifty million dollars. But a main focus is on early childhood learning, something that we have been, or I've been focusing on the school district and we're definitely going to be able to implement even more things moving forward. Seventeen million is being allocated for early intervention Head Start, which is not specific to the school district, but it is, you know, an early intervention service. And pre-K count, one of, we operate, well, we don't operate one of those programs. The IU has a pre-K count program that we, we have here in the school district. And we're looking to grow the pre-K count programs even more. Let's grab it.
Just, could I just add?
Okay.
So that budget presentation, the estimation for Berwick is like one point four million in addition as it was presented. Not saying that's going to pass, but that's, that's the number currently that was proposed.
And Joe, remind me, like, so last year, when he presented those amounts, remember, he did similar? Nobody knew, you know, you never know. That's the thing about a school district budget. You don't, you, we have to pass our budget before the state passes their budget. So, you know, if you were to build those things into your budget and then they cut it, then what do you do? Your fund balance has to make up for that.
I just wanted to let, let everybody know what that number really looks like here. From a budgeting perspective, I wouldn't budget the full one for you. We talked about that as we go. But that would have come true with what he presented. That's what it would be.
Thank you.
Ms. Shippman has something for us from West Berwick Elementary.
It's loading. All right, I'll just start it. In...
You might have lost some of our board docs.
Mid-January, one of our second-grade teachers, Mrs. Turtman, decided to do a We Love Our World Valentine's Day project. And what started with a Facebook post, but basically asking for family, friends to send a Valentine's card, letter, souvenir to her class. Within twelve hours, the post had been shared two hundred and fifty-nine times. Within twenty-four hours, it had grown to five hundred and thirty-six shares. Then in forty-eight hours, the post was shared seven hundred and thirty-three times. By the end of the week, mail-in packages started pouring in from all around the world. Three weeks later, posts about the project had been shared nine hundred and seventy-nine times. And up there, that picture of the class in front of some of the cards and souvenirs that were sent to West Berwick. As of a couple of days ago, so in about twenty-six days, we got a something of Valentine's from all fifty states. And they're all marked with a heart. And then the countries that we received from, are marked with a heart on the other side. And we received a Valentine from twenty-one countries. Some included Canada, Australia, Ireland, Germany, Colombia, England, China, Russia, Brazil, South Korea, India, and Japan, just to name a few. The students are learning not only math and skills, but history, geography, social studies, and the power of the internet. They have received Valentine's in the form of cards, postcards, a Texas-sized rebound candy bar, a Georgia license plate, individual bags of caramel popcorn from North Dakota, very good, a case of soda distributed only in Wisconsin, individual-sized bags of macadamia nuts from Hawaii, the Alaska flag, mini fall bears from Australia, German chocolates, and Russian candy bars. Pretty neat project and, and all over the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Raise this to public comments. For your minutes, please take your name.
I don't need an introduction. I don't need that anymore. Crystal Michaelowski, Nescapek. As I stated in my email, I sent to the board members on January thirty-first. Month after month, I have attended the board meetings and brought up various topics for consideration regarding the fate of Nescapek and the effects of exposure on Salem and West Berwick. Now I am once again asking that you vote to rescind the decision to close Nescapek. By rescinding the decision, it will allow you more time to do research and obtain information from independent companies to determine what is best for the students of the entire district, such as redistricting, to lower the class sizes of, at West Berwick, how best to use all of the district's buildings, and how to bring fifth grade back to the elementary schools. By taking more time to thoroughly and objectively research all options for all of the buildings, we can then make an informed decision and not just use information given to you from the administration. This is especially important for the new board members who did not attend the numerous meetings that were held since this all began. You did not hear all of the questions and concerns that were brought forth, most of which remain unanswered. Mrs. Muir, Mr. Lanning, Mr. Eisenhower, Mr. Yost, and Mr. Nespoli. Back in November, you were all asked if you would vote to reverse the Nescapek decision. Mrs. Muir, Mr. Lanning, you stated that you would vote to reverse the decision. Mr. Nespoli, you stated that I was not in favor of the vote to close Nescapek. Your father voted to keep Nescapek open. Since you stated you were not in favor of closing Nescapek, will you support his decision and vote to reverse the decision? Mr. Eisenhower, you stated I would love to look at reversing the decision about closing Nescapek. It looks like it wasn't the correct decision. Mr. Yost, you stated there are too many unknown variables in the current budget to be able to make an informed decision. It's only been two months since you guys have taken office. Do you feel that you have all the information you need to make an informed decision, especially in light of how things keep changing with the needs of for Salem? If you don't rescind the decision, is Salem really going to be ready by the fall to house all of the Nescapek students? So I plead with you to rescind the decision, to get more time to thoroughly investigate what is best for the students. It is understood that it may just be temporary, but we would all be much more accepting of a decision to close Nescapek if the data truly supports that decision. Contrary to what some may say, this decision is more than just Nescapek. It will affect all of the elementary schools and the options available for the entire district going forward. Please take the time needed by voting to rescind the decision to close Nescapek Elementary. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Nicole Marigan and I live in Nescapek. The last board meeting that I attended, I sat here and I listened to the board for a good twenty minutes debate on a topic about locking the gates at Salem. And one of the things, one of the members' approach was basically just, let's leave it as is. It's working. And then there was another board member's approach that basically kind of chuckled at the response, calling it, you know, it was a careless, it wasn't a preventative approach. And I can't help but feel like that's the approach that's being taken with the closure of Nescapek. I know a lot of people have been involved in this decision, but for me, you know, my kids are going to be affected by this and so is everybody else's kids. And I just, I feel that, like Crystal says, I think that more time, we need more time. There were board members who voted to close Nescapek who are no longer here to see that decision through. I think the new board members need to be given time to help facilitate all of that. Not just that, but, you know, we're six months out from the new school year. That six months out, we're going to be having kindergarten orientations. We can't even tell our kids what school they're supposed to be going to. According to the last meeting, there's been no PO cup for equipment that's needed. There's no, you know, the construction hasn't been awarded. You know, you're six months out. I just, I think planning purposes, I just don't think there's, you know, that we're not ready yet. I'm all for change. I'm all for change if it's going to better the district, if it's going to better our kids. But I guess, my question is, is it necessary? Is it necessary for our kids? Not one time have I seen, there's been so many different numbers stated, no one has been able to tell us how many classes are we going to have for our students? How many students are going to be in our classrooms? The, the numbers are all over the place. Smaller class sizes are proven, they're proven to do better for the kids. My son came home, he's already feeling the effects of a, of a larger class size. Mommy, what am I doing wrong? My teacher doesn't call on me enough. He's feeling, I don't want to say alienated, but he's just, he's not feeling like he's engaged enough. Well, honey, you have a lot more kids in your class now. And this is, this is just a touch. He's got twenty-three, twenty-four kids. What happens when they come over here and there's thirty kids? They're going to get lost in these classrooms. The smaller class sizes are proven. They're, they're going to have better peer relationships. They're going to, they're going to be more responsible for their actions. They're going to be more responsible, just kids overall. It's going to promote social, more positive social behavior. The other thing that I want to bring up too is the bathrooms. I don't know if somebody, anybody's looked into this, but there's a PA code fifty-five point two that discusses bathrooms and the number of toilets and sinks. So that's just something I'm curious if you guys have been able to verify that you're going to have enough toilets and sinks for the children. Thank you.
I'm Nicole Zuckerski from Nescapek Township. Over the past two weeks, I've had the benefit of talking to six of you. And I posed the same two questions to all six people. Question one, can you please explain to me how closing Nescapek saves any kind of significant money to the district? No one has been able to do that. Question two, can you explain how if we are increasing class size, how does this also increase the educational outcomes for both Salem and Nescapek kids? And no one has been able to do that. So, before you cast a vote tonight that could potentially disrupt the lives of several kids, I'm asking you to please consider waiting until the proper research has been done so you can answer these two questions and tell the community this. This is what we want to know and this is what our kids deserve. Thank you.
Hi, Tara Megan. I'm the Philville. A limitation of Mr. McKensy's presentation that I want to point out is that population is best understood as, as a dynamic and system sort of situation. So calculations from PDE that take into account only these birth and death rates, they've been used before with some area districts and they've significantly underestimated just the next year of kiddos coming into that school. Just, just a heads up, these fast and cheap ways of getting at numbers are, are just that. They are fast and cheap. So these studies are best done by firms who specialize in this kind of data and its interpretation to address demographic and local nuances. This plug-and-play software is a great tool, but it's not a comprehensive answer to a dilemma. A reminder that several of you have referred to this initial decision on this issue as a rush job and that it was largely based on information from a firm that you've since fired because you had issues with their recommendations and fee scale. The readiness of this building to absorb extra students has been misrepresented for many months now and the district is not really in a position to borrow money for a large renovation. This is another chance to do it the way it should have been done from the start.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Miller. I reside in La Wallop, Pennsylvania. And first, before I speak, I want to say thank you to everyone here, the board and all the people. I'm so thankful for every single one of you and I am so proud of you for taking a stand to serve our community. And I want you to know that I'm here to support you every... every step of the way, no matter what you decide, and that God loves you, and I am for every single one of you. So, first, I wanted to address the board in the sense of, I understand how it is difficult and hard to manage money and for us to make the best decisions. So, I acknowledge that, and I partner with you in compassion for having a big responsibility to make the decisions that are best for our community with our finances. But then I also want to address those in favor for Nescapek for tonight. I do want to let you know that even though I desire to build a business in Berwick, to help the orphans and the widows in Berwick, and to stand up for those who are in poverty in Berwick, I am living in Loser County, and I do stand with Nescapek for their school to remain open. These are some things that came to my attention that I wanted to share in regards to my knowledge that we should all take in consideration when making these decisions. First, early childhood education is so, so crucial for the development of human life. So, if they have damage in that time period, I'm 34 years old, and I am now just also getting over certain things that happened in childhood. So, we need to be thinking about the care that we provide them during this time. It's very, very crucial. Second is I have many family members and friends who drive a van in Nescapek. Kids get on the bus at 6:30 a.m. I certainly will have to get on the bus much, much earlier to go to Salem. So, we're to be thinking about that. This is something I really want to bring to our attention. God willing, you have the time. Yay, I love the YMCA. And yesterday, when I was walking down the hallway, the Bible verse was on the screen that said, I believe it's Isaiah 117, either way it filmed regards to this line, "Learn to do good, seek justice, correct oppression, bring justice to the fatherless, and feed the widow's cause." I want to challenge every single person here tonight, if you have not already, to watch the documentary, "The Fatherless Epidemic." Now, this comes from a biblical perspective. However, in the documentary, it challenges us to look at who are the widows and the orphans of the day? I do believe many of the widows and orphans of the day are the single parents, the single mothers, whether they are mothers or fathers. They have less to take care of. My mom was a single mom of four, took us to the Nescapek Elementary School, and she needed even more support from the community. So, how is this going to affect our single parents? The last thing, and this is a challenge of money, gosh, we only have 90 seconds. I really want to challenge you, I have five pennies here. This is not enough for every board member, and I'm not trying to bribe you. But I really want to challenge you to ask yourself, "Do you put your trust in riches?" Psalms, read Psalms 49, "The foolishness of trusting in riches." I have seen God provide money time and time again when I give my 10% to the church. So, I want to challenge you, where are you putting your money? Are you giving your 10%? Are you trusting in riches? Or are you trusting in the God who's going to send down a blessing so large you will not know what to do with it? Malachi 3:10, study that scripture. Because the day I received these five pennies from the Lord was also a day he sent down a blessing for this community. So, I'm sorry I increased my time, but I really want to challenge us, are we making our decisions out of the fear of money or the fear of God? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dossel Michalowski. I'm the daughter of Crystal Michalowski, and to follow on her statements, I'm going to focus on fifth grade. Now, from a middle school point of view, an eighth grader point of view, I walk through the halls every day. I change classes every day. I see these fifth graders come back from lunch. They're small, they're tiny. I could run over them if I wanted to. But you have to understand, fifth grade does not belong in the middle school. They're immature, they can't handle these big classes, and they're changing classes. And it's so much for a fifth grader. I was there once, and it was so much coming from fourth grade. And fourth grade was so much different. And as an eighth grader, I want to speak up and tell the community that fifth grade does not belong in the middle school. They still need to learn and be more mature with an elementary school, more than a middle school, where they have to go to pep rallies and deal with all these more mature things that they're not used to yet. And that fifth grade doesn't, it just doesn't belong. I mean, look at these fifth graders. They're small, tiny. Like I've said before, many times, they're small, they're tiny. Like, they don't belong where they belong. Now, I went to Nescapek, and I care for Nescapek, and I want to see Nescapek grow and continue. And I am in class, the top class actually, in Berwick Middle School. I am in geometry. And that is thanks to Nescapek. Nescapek, small class sizes, it helped me learn better. It helped me get more knowledge and understanding these math topics and these ELA topics and these social studies topics. It helped me learn and grow. And now, look where I've gotten because of that. I've gotten up to geometry. And, you know, it's hard, yeah, geometry's hard, but Nescapek helped me with that. And I just want you guys to know that it's because of Nescapek that I am where I am today. And I want you guys to know that the community of Nescapek cares for Nescapek, for one big family, Nescapek. So, I plead to you to rescind the vote and save Nescapek.
Yeah, Lauren Musina, I'm the mayor of Nescapek. All board members met me in spring when we had our little get-together. I thought we'd customer with the name for that, all of you. Other things have come to light since then. Hazelton has, what, 13,000 students in it right now?
13,200.
13,200 students. Wow. What's it like to have that down here? Guess what, it's gone. Because Hazelton is crowded, overcrowded, and those people are moving. Things have been said by, I'll say, other school officials. "Why do you want to close Nescapek? The building is paid for." Really, come on. It costs you less to maintain that building and operate it than what it's going to cost you to build a brand-new elementary school. Think about it. 50 million for a new elementary school, and that's what it would cost now. What's it going to cost for five years? 55, 60 million? Right? Nescapek is paid for. You know, a couple million here, a couple million there. You know, between Nescapek and Salem, you'll have the capacity to handle some of those 13,000 students that may be coming your way. And I'll say, will be coming your way. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on. General items 1 through 7. Does anybody have any questions or discussion to do these items?
Question for G6. I read the contract. There's, it says about overtime, but what are the overtime rates?
We're not paying the overtime rates unless I approve them. And I'm only approving the 180 rates that they would work for us.
So, as we spoke about earlier, they won't be used for activities after school? Because that would be overtime under their contract.
We are looking to use our people and our overtime rates for our guys.
Would it be 62 months?
It'd be time and a half.
Time and a half.
Yes.
So, it's 62.
Right. We would be looking to use our guys.
And the hours. You're going to have a guy come in, he's going to be more likely than not to grab a car, right? Start at your station, then come over to our place, whether it's the junior high or Salem. When does this time start? Because that, once again, takes us into overtime, or he's going to leave at 3:30 or 2:30, whatever the hours are decided, make it back to the station, file whatever paperwork. So, we had it over in Hazelton before they hired school police. We had state police do it. It was always an hour, hour and a half of overtime that trooper made. So, I was just curious, is it the same thing that we're looking at here?
So, again, I'm not the one that made the contract or sat in on the contract negotiations or anything along those lines. It would be my understanding that time would start at whatever time his contract says and ends at that time, whether he has to go back to the station to grab a car or anything along those lines. That would be, it would be between those certain times. If it takes him five minutes to drop a car off, that's on his own time, or his or her own time. The contracts between, if it's a set contract between 7:00 and 3:00, he only works 7:00 to 3:00.
So, starting here at 7:00 or 8:00, whatever it's going to be, and ending here at 4:00 or 3:00, whatever it's going to be.
Correct.
And then, any other time outside of that.
Correct. That's what would be my understanding.
That's my understanding from McNeil.
Correct.
Want to get that stipulated in the contract?
It's going to be helpful. And the hours. Whether it's going to be a junior high, you know, like, our elementary starts maybe at 9 o'clock. Junior high may start at 7:45. There's blocks.
I don't want to name the specific hours because, I mean, ours do change.
You guys are going to need, or you're going to have a guy to school and to command whenever.
That's, that's his job. This is, yeah, this is going to be his sole job. It's.
Well, if that was the case, I thought he'd work for you guys, going to work all summer for you guys totally.
He's going to, yes. But during the school year, he's going to be solely, it's going to just be an SRL for the school. And then in the summer, when school's out, he's going to work for us full-time.
Who fills, no. It's a contract, police contract. You guys are getting sick time, holiday time. Who fills in when he's, let's pick the sick day or holiday?
Another officer.
Your question, I have what happens in cases of emergencies. Who's the chief command on scene? Is it our officer, or it's going to be you, or him?
I guess I would say, what kind of incident are you respecting?
I mean, we see what happens in Uvalde. You know, when there's a lack of chain of command, bad things can happen.
Correct. So, I'm an active shooter instructor. So, the way that it works is, your first arriving officers are not going to be your command officers. Your command doesn't start until you have enough resources there that you don't need help anywhere else. So, if I were going to tell you that he's going to be specifically a command officer if something were to happen, I can't tell you that he would be. Not saying he won't be, though. Does that answer your question, or?
Yeah, because I mean, hopefully there's like a clear path and where it's not confused if you're.
So.
Those time seconds count.
So, we have myself and Sergeant Heckland plus the rest of our department, as well as the school's security, have been training for situations if they arise. But as well as Berwick, the SWAT team, we've all gone in on special protocols and things that we do to alleviate any of those problems, whether it be identifying threats to understanding what your job is to do in that situation. And to answer your question, it depends on the type of incident. Usually, it would hold until a senior officer gets there, they would act, and then central command would be set up. It all depends, like, we're talking active shooter, like you said, that comes down the road. Your first initial guys are going to end a threat. They're not worried about setting up and talking to this person. Their job is to solely go in, end a threat, then central command gets set up, where, get the help that's needed to come in, ambulances, things along those lines, notifying parents and everything else, and working with the school. Initial officer goes in, handles what they have to handle, and we worry about that after the fact. So, it's going to be a close working relationship. I can't say who's going to have. And again, it all depends on what building it's in also.
Right. And are you available to try and go to other buildings if and when the need occurs, or something?
So, we have, as officers, we have access to every school in the district. If something arises, we will be able to handle it.
But jurisdiction-wise, over in Nescapek, and I believe you may be working in Nescapek, so you may have jurisdiction of that. But at West, you wouldn't have jurisdiction in another county, another jurisdiction, or per?
So, no, it's still, it's still Loser County. However, we would not have jurisdiction unless there is a mutual aid agreement that's signed through the school saying that we are allowed to operate inside the buildings. Again, that wouldn't be us. We would probably just, again, I don't know what the contract says, so I can't speak out of turn. It's Salem and the middle school, to my knowledge.
Well, that's where you would have jurisdiction.
Correct.
It's our county, Salem Township.
Correct. Now, we're able to, if there was a shooting at the high school, then county lines don't come in effect. It's all hands on deck, same thing with, it would happen in Nescapek. You're going to have people from Montour County coming, and same thing with school pool. You're going to have everybody that we can possibly get here to complete the job. So, at those, at that time, when there's a high-risk incident, you get, you can go anywhere you need to.
By the side, the high risk. The day-to-day, Officer Daly's not available. You guys don't have the jurisdiction to go down to West Per?
Correct.
You mean, based on his 20, 25 hours, on his 25-hour schedule, or not?
We said earlier, he wasn't available last week. So, they still don't have jurisdiction. Because the high school's in Columbia, I believe. Does it have the gym, is Salem?
No, it's actually the middle school, varsity. The varsity gym, that's the place, isn't it?
So, just so we know which schools that these guys are able to go into and which ones are not?
Yeah. According to McNeil, it's Salem Middle School and...
The middle school.
Well, right, but potentially, you know, who need help? In Loser County, over at Nescapek. So, the high school and West Berwick, in the event that Mr. Daly is not available, we would rely on the Berwick police.
On a daily basis, who will this officer report to? Like, if there's a minor incident, it's student?
He's specifically placed at the middle school. We have currently.
Well, I mean, there's an incident with a student, he's got to decide whether to pursue something legally or not. Does he go to Salem Police and they decide there,
go to Salem Police and they decide there or does our school?
Well, I mean, legal's legal. It should just be black and white. Um, but if it's.
What are the schools?
If it's a situation that involves an IEP student, you know, a special education student, those kinds of things, we have a process that's, that's in place, um, that they, you know, of course, immediately in the school, they notify the building administrator. And then, then we go through a process depending on what needs that student.
Just I'm asking, what's his chain of command within the building? Would it be Officer Daly?
No, it'll be the building.
Or is it back in Salem?
It'll be the building administrator. What's the matter?
No, chain of command, it's up to them to make the arrest.
Right.
Whatever police officer's out there, administration can't step in and say, we don't want arrests.
Correct.
Right, but they, that's what I'm saying. That piece of it is black and white, but if it's an IEP student, special education.
That doesn't matter to me. Law enforcement, IEPs don't matter.
So I think to answer your question is, if an arrest needs to be made, the sole decision would be up to the police officer at the time. If it's an issue where, um, the police officer thinks, like, I'm assuming they're gonna work hand-in-hand with the principal. It's not, we're coming in, we're gonna be the boss, and that's how it is. There's gonna be a, a close working relationship with the principals. Again, if an arrest needs to be made, we're gonna make the arrest.
So if the contract does address the overtime. So if the contract does address the overtime that has to be approved by when they.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I was asking, the rate and earlier we were speaking about, we're gonna start having them at events. Their jurisdiction says something's at the high school, and if they had jurisdiction over the high school, they have, anything had Salem or Junior High.
So, so the question was to have something specifically in there saying, I don't know, picking up the car or, right?
Well, what I was, when State worked at Hazelton before they hired police, the State started their shift at station. They then went to Hazelton. You then worked your eight hours. You then went back to your station, turned your paper and gassed your car, did whatever. And we had a, we had good vision. There's no way we did that for free. So we, we agreed that right away and got our money. And that's what I'm asking. Are we gonna pay every day a build-in hour of overtime? Or is this, we're responsible for seven hours or eight hours or how does it work?
And your shift starts at the arrival.
I guess if we could write it that, you don't wanna set the time of the beginning or end of the particular day, but it could be worded that it starts when they, uh, that they begin at the district property.
That's when we start paying, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
But the way McNeil explained it to me is their clock-in time is the time they arrive here. That's their, and their clock-out time is the time they leave here.
For us.
For us.
And if they wanted, if your guy wanted to grieve it later, he's grieving you guys and not us.
Correct.
And that's what we wanted in here.
But that's, when I read it, I, I was union. And trust me, I wouldn't have done it for nothing. So I would, I would have taken my money. That's.
Thank you.
So that's what we wanna add. We wanna add that the day starts when they arrive and finishes when they leave the district. So then we'll read this night and we'll read that.
Well.
So Mr. Gold's gonna add that. So if we approve that, that'll be in there and that'll be one, that'll be up to them to decide if they wanna.
Are there any other questions for general items one through seven? Do we get a motion to approve items G one through G seven? All in favor? Close? Nice having. General item number eight, roll call vote. We will rescind the previous board votes to close Escapack Elementary.
Can we have comment?
Oh, discussion?
Absolutely, we should have.
Where?
What's the motion? It should be a second before.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What, what's the move?
We can't hear you. It's. Who made the motion? And then, so you need a second.
Right now, uh, there's supposed to be seven plans. It's been discussed by Mrs. Metalowski many times when she's come in. And it's coming closer to reality. Hazelton just found out that we, as was stated, they no more than I do thirteen thousand two hundred students. They are now in the process of building a new building just because those seven plants are coming in. They're not all, they're out of housing over there. They're already living two, any, two families upstairs. Each bedroom's a family. Down in the basement, they got this split. They are moving. And, uh, I, I just hate to close a building, and I don't think it's wise for us to close a building at this time until we see what the impact is when these plants get built. They really are building. It was just in the paper about two weeks ago. Uh, they're building it behind the high school in the swamps. That's how, they need the land. They have to put a building up quick. They're even building a bridge to get to it so the kids can walk. So that was just decided at a meeting two weeks ago, school board meeting over there I was at. And it's something that we really should consider. Because it will cost us more money to build the building. I just don't wanna lose that one.
On that, we've, it's been suggested before, just add space later. And our budget guy just told us, don't borrow any more money. Don't boomerang any more money on the end of our debt. That's not wise. So if we do end up out of space, what are our options? We don't really have an option at that point. And earlier we're talking about, everybody's brought up early interventions and preschool and all that stuff. If we go to two buildings, there's no, really not enough space for all the classrooms and rooms that we need anyway in two buildings. There certainly isn't space for any preschool instruction in those buildings. And earlier we're talking about preschool that's in our high schools getting shuffled. And they're having to walk down the hall and nobody seems to be happy with preschoolers walking around with twelfth graders. Especially the reason they got shuffled is there's drunks in the bathroom. So why wouldn't we have three buildings, be able to have a preschool in each building like we used to and have that space? Besides, we literally have almost no advantage closing buildings. We gained one teacher. So we're sacrificing building for one teacher overall. We could easily add that position like it.
I'm gonna disagree with that one. As far as efficiency of the school, we sort of, resources. As far as use of resources, and I, I don't think anybody would disagree that we're operating on a skeleton for K through twelve. Right? Two thousand twelve, we cut forty-five positions. In that time, we cut to our fund balance by fifteen million, maybe a little bit more. We've gone down in test scores, up in truancy, up in discipline, up in demand per student with IEPs. But I don't think anybody's gonna argue that we're not operating at a high level right now. Right? To me, this is a conversation, it's, it's a tough one. It's a very tough one. I've been through it recently when I fought to keep the family school. But it's a matter of people and not buildings. We don't have enough people. And we can talk about people moving here, and I hope that they do. I really do. That, that would be great for this community. As of this morning, as of this morning, there was sixteen houses for sale, the entire Berwick school. So where are they moving to? We're out of housing here too. Unless you're gonna build new, which brings in more revenue. We need to add positions to this district no matter what happens. Make quality of education K through twelve better. If we're not gonna do that, we're moving laterally versus moving backwards. It's not helping the students. We're gonna have more kids fall through the cracks. If we keep Escapack open, bare minimum, create an equitable solution across all the schools. You have to move eighty-five to a hundred kids from West Berwick to Salem to Escapack. So the small class sizes are no longer at Escapack. You have to add Title One, you have to add special ed. You have to add guidance. You have to add curriculum director or principal, one of those two. You know, we're talking forward progress, not staying where we are at. You add all that up and you consider that three, no matter what maps you're doing, is more expensive than two. And you take the thirteen million dollars projected by AEM to improve Escapack. Cut it in thirds, make it four million, five million, whatever you want. Over the next ten years, you're looking at millions of dollars in expenses, which you just said we shouldn't be tapping onto the end of the debt. Okay, so I understand that I was just eleven. But I have been nose-deep in this every single day since early November. I don't know how much more I can study on it, but my eyes have been open to the real problem here. And it's not a building problem, it's a people problem. We have really good administrative staff here. We have really good teachers here. I trust their recommendations. I have spoken to dozens of teachers across the district. I've spoken to teachers at Escapack. Again, it's a tough decision. But I'm, I'm gonna disagree with the state leaders with respect.
Question I have here, this is, I couldn't bring this up ad nauseam to everybody, is why haven't we considered an outside firm, SiteLogic, that by understanding has given us a proposal that for whatever reason has never been brought to any committee or any of the board general, to evaluate the entire district K to twelve and find out what plans we could possibly do, lay all the options out, pros, cons, and then we can make a decision based upon that. I mean, right now, I'm looking at a tentative, uh, transition plan here that adds their emotional support class from the West Berwick. West Berwick's busted at the seams. I think we all know there's a lot of support issues down there. If we put that class down there without the proper support to go with it, we're setting up our employees for failure. I mean, I've got concerns.
I agree with Keith. I think we need to do an outside study before we make, before we decide to close the building. I think we owe that to the students. I think we're in huge disservice to the students, um, at every element of school if we don't find out if there's a better option. Mr. Hasley said we need a principal, curriculum director, and a guidance counselor. We have, there is a principal and curriculum director at, um, Escapack right now, so I don't.
Well, I said, in order to move the district forward, you need a curriculum director to a.
Right, but that would be, that wouldn't be, I mean, that would be a position that we have to add because the position right now is both the principal and the curriculum director.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, there's a guidance counselor.
Also shared. So when you share resources, Mr. Taylor's brought up earlier with drive time. When you're sharing resources between buildings, it takes me from my house right up the road here to get downtown, it takes me ten minutes to get there. If you're going from school to school to school, how many times are they going back and forth throughout the day and wasting time on the cards here of instructing students, you're working in the school?
Okay, well then we could bring up, um, how, how long kids from the outer town should turn around buses to, and they're becoming, you know.
There's no perfect solution.
Right, but, but I think the research needs to be done before we, and we need to make a responsive decision. The research needs to be done before we should decide that the answer is just to close the school.
Research on what?
Of what could be the best, would we need to redistribute students, you know, all, all these things of, everybody's. Redistributing students, find out what is best. We have to get a building evaluation, I would think. Do a whole study on the entire district. Like Keith suggests, if SiteLogic sent a proposal, we bought in a building and grabbed what it was brought up.
They actually, they actually made a presentation to us this time.
But they've never brought one to the board.
Not to the board, no.
So.
Presentation for the district.
Yeah, I wanted to.
Yeah, about a year ago.
Yeah.
But what's gonna change in here?
But I know some people are sitting here on the board or not at those meetings.
That, that's the question I keep coming back to. We've been studying for seven years. It, it's, I don't see the data changing. The class sizes are going up in Escapack. They're coming down everywhere else they're moving.
Join data, that backs it up. It's an AEM study that was written with a major construction project for, for a new building. Probably don't bother to check if we have room in our budget for the debt service meter for.
As far as time added, bringing kids over from Escapack to Berwick, according to Google Maps, six minutes. I guess we can study the challenge.
That's wrong.
The bus contract.
I report.
Six minutes, according to the National District of Education.
Longer than six minutes.
That's not what fall apart.
Mount High House, right along the side, fall apart and back on that tree.
The bus is stopping from, from Escapack to Salem.
To Salem.
So, but that's specifically just, why can't the person go to the school?
Let's say ten minutes. Let's say twelve minutes.
If it's that, if it's that, second.
Public comment's over. Thank you. I have another public comment at the end of the meeting.
I just have one more thing. I know we have bad teachers in the set. This is a very easy website to find. The National Center for Educational Statistics. NCES dot ed dot gov, the national, or government site. School district our size in this state. And a hundred and sixty-three teachers. That's what we have. Where are we at? Around two hundred and eleven to?
Two twelve.
Two twelve. State average. And that's a name, National Center for Educational Statistics. The national average for school districts our size is a hundred and seventy-eight teachers. We may not need more teachers. We may need to put them in places where we actually need them. And that's reallocating our teachers. And that, that's, when I hear that we have to add and add and add, that's the website. I'll tell you again, it's real simple. Everybody has phone. N C E S.
Can you, is that comparing apples to apples as far as the amount of statistics?
We're bad. You don't wanna look at that one because we're.
I'm just, I'm looking at test score across.
If, if you wanna look at schools our size, Prescott has a hundred more people to move up. Hundred more students. They have a hundred thirty-five teachers.
How many IEPs were staffed?
I don't have that information, but I do know they have a hundred thirty-five because they let twenty go last year.
Yeah, how, how are they doing?
Yeah, they furloughed, didn't they?
Yeah, they furl, I'm not making any of this up.
Yeah, I know, but they're, they're not doing very well.
They're doing better in test score, they're sure than we are. That's why people move up to Prescott without Hazelton.
On a poll, they're not doing very well.
Well, I don't know how they're doing personally, but I'm just going by national average and state average. So we don't need all those extra positions. Basically, go by this form.
Does it give us, does it give us student to professional ratios in it?
Hold on.
That model five, that frontline model five?
This right here, it gives us. It gives us everything.
No, I can't see it.
But there is one that does do a breakdown. Our student to ratio, ratio. Uh, it says thirteen point seventy-nine. If you'd like to see it on my phone. It's easier if you guys had the phone, just like I'm repeating myself on that. Thirteen points seven nine.
How many teachers? How many teachers?
No, no, you're gonna know by students. They, they.
How many, how many teachers did that? Thirteen point seven nine students per teacher. How many teachers?
It says a hundred ninety-three is already in Berwick. There's accounting nurses, I guess. Everybody ain't seen yet. So we're saying we have a hundred ninety-three teachers. And that puts us thirty over state average and twenty over national.
Wouldn't it be thirteen point seven nine of district is, of Berwick?
Yeah. Did you pull that thing up right here?
Only have one school right now that has those numbers. That's Escapack.
I, I, wait, unless it's apples to apples, we don't have that data. You have to look at what's happened here. Since we've made those staff budgets, everything has gone down. Performance was. The budget's gone up. The budget's up to forty percent. Fund balance down, budget up, performance down.
That's how we got our fund balance. We've reduced those teacher numbers.
Our fund balance is down?
No, no. You'll always hear talking about the old teachers. We didn't raise taxes for twelve years. We had a twenty-five million dollar fund balance. We gained that twenty-five million dollar fund balance because we got rid of teachers who didn't replace it. That's how we got our fund balance.
Here's the fund balance. We got the fund balance in twenty-ten. Berwick was in twenty-twelve. The fund balance has gone down. The budget has gone.
How many buildings have we closed during that time period? And let go of teachers and not replace them. That's what you have to look at.
I just said we haven't replaced them. We let go of, we had two hundred and forty-four. We're at two hundred and twelve.
Tax, tax increases don't get you a twenty-five million dollar budget. It's personnel.
I understand that. I don't think we're talking about the same things.
Well, that's how we got the fund balance. Might not replace any teachers.
Well, we're talking about performance. I'm, I'm correlating performance of the school with when we cut.
So I don't know what the grades were back then or what the performance was in two thousand ten.
I have them since two thousand seventeen.
Well, not two thousand ten, when, when we had all those extra.
Well, the trajectory still goes the same.
But do you have enough?
The standards has changed. They're not the same. You can't compare. I, I don't create the standard. I can just tell you what they are. They've gone down across the board by at least fifteen percent in every grade. They've gone down across the board by at least 15% in every grade since 2017.
Does he need a curriculum put in place?
I agree, we need a curriculum director.
That's accounting for the numbers, Solomon.
Anybody else, anything else to add? Nobody else have anything else to add, we're ready to go.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Unless I can see data that proves we should reverse the decision at this time of all.
Mrs. Pope?
No.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Hesley?
No.
Mr. Hess?
Yes, because I want to see this, this white study.
Mr. Yost?
No.
Mrs. Curlo?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Land?
Yes.
Item 16 is budget and finance. And that is the $10,000 towards installation of the gunshot detection camera. We get a motion for that. Home favor?
No.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next, we're looking for approval to give the notice of intent for the high school agreement. We get a motion for that? Second?
Second.
Home favor?
No.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Transportation, we have one item to hire bus drivers. We get a motion to be bus drivers. Do we get a second? Home favor? Opposed? Eyes have it. We have 13 personnel items. Does anyone have any questions? Will any of you like, read these question marks?
Yeah, 13, 3LC, 101, right?
Yes, we removed that. We ended up not, if we had one applicant, then they need to come to the... Or they declined, I'm sorry, it's not that they didn't show, they declined.
So 14 is the third one. Right.
P5, was it posted?
Is that true?
I don't know which one that is.
Uh, P5 is the...
E-sports was not posted.
E-sports.
Was not posted?
Same two people that started the program last year.
But the cost has gone up $200 per person.
I thought it was a thousand last year.
What's that?
I thought it was a thousand last year for each.
I think we paid him a thousand each because it was a, it was an assistant coach and I paid him out of athletics.
Paid him out of athletics?
And next year it's going to a club.
Is it coached? If it's a coach, they should be under a coaching, pay scale $200.
It's not, it's not a, yeah, that's what we were throwing around. We did that because it was new last year, so we paid it under, we had the athletics because we didn't have assistant coaches, so we did it again, but next year they're putting it on.
Fun coaching?
No, that's actually one of our stifling conversations that we, I would like to address because DIAA is not recognizing it as a, as a sport, so it's going to be a club. What we hate for it last year out of athletics.
There was a question on your coaching that we were going to talk about somebody else that first removed. Did we have that discussion? Before we... Yeah. So, should go not? So what do we do for the athletic play? For athletic play, we're not personally down?
Looking for a motion, if there's no more questions, to approve all personnel items with the exception of the ALC. Home favor? Uh, can you oppose? Eyes have it. Stole business. Anybody have anything stole business? All right, let's move on, do the business. Nothing for new business. Can't bring this to the final public comment. Three minutes, please state your name.
Father Michaelowski, no, I respect your choice not to, to close Salem, I mean Mesquite, but, you know, I went to Mesquite and it hurts, it really, it does. And I stand up here and I address the board, specifically the board, I look at you guys and I think, you know, maybe I want to be on the board someday. But you guys already have it set. Before I even walk in here, before you guys even walk in, you have set, set what you're going to do. And it hurts. It hurts like I'm getting shot that you disguise to closing Mesquite. And I don't know what else to say to you guys because I'm trusting you that you guys would change the vote and that I could see Mesquite go on. And I don't speak a lot in public. And I got the courage to come up here today and speak in front of you guys. And it hurts. It hurts so bad. And I want you to reflect on your decision. And I want it, I want you to see where you went wrong. Because you're going to realize you, you've made a terrible mistake. And for the ones who wanted to help Mesquite, I thank you. I thank you. Because you saw what you needed to do, you saw the right decision. And the ones who voted no, I hope you see, and I hope you see that you will pay, pay for closing Mesquite. All I have to say, you've got...
My question now is what now? What's the transition plan? How's this going to work? Where are the bus stops going to be? What kids have to be on the bus longer? Because all of these questions we've been asking months after months after months with no answers. At least that's been made public. And how, again, I hope our support services is ready because you're going to have approximately 160 kids that you have to explain this to, that they have, they don't have their school now next year. And in a few short months, we have to figure out how to get them to Salem. We, we asked for this, we wanted the band-aid to be ripped off, but, you know, for the people that were just elected, we thought we could take you out of work. We really did. They would come in with this and open a mind. You said closing Mesquite was the wrong decision, and yet you did it again. It just blows our mind. But that's obviously where we have to focus now, is as a board and as the administration, please give us a concrete transition plan that we can go home, we can explain to our kids now, you are not going to have your school next year, and this is how it's going to work. How many Mesquite to Salem students are you going to have in each class? I sure hope more than one, I sure hope, you know, now my kids are affected. My, my son has to go to fifth grade in, in the middle school and lose his youth because as soon as he goes on that bus, all of his childhood is gone. It's happened to friends of mine. You know, whether you believe or not that a fifth grader should still believe in, you know, all the fairy tales and all of that, that's your own personal choices, but that's gone. That is, their youth is gone when they go to fifth grade. How are you ever going to get fifth grade back to the elementary schools now? Unless you completely redistrict and make a primary center and a secondary center, which we've been bringing it up for years now, nope, not, not feasible, not logistically, can't do it. So please, give us a transition plan that we can work with because we've got a lot of work to do in a short amount of time. Please.
I don't see it again. Decision was made and several of you probably figured you're only affecting 150 students. You're affecting over 900 students in your elementary school. Mr. Hesley brings out the thing that we need to hire more people. Yeah, well, where are you going to put them now? You just lost a third of your capacity to put more teachers into. Yeah, I know you're a yardie. Yeah. You're getting ready to buy that building over there and build some housing so you can bring more people down to Berwick. But if they have kids, where are you going to send them to school? 900 students you just affected, not 150, 900. Think of that. Your friends, your family, you know, their students are now going to be crowded into smaller, or more densely packed in classrooms because you don't think Mesquite should have small classrooms. Well, you can always send people over there. It's only six minutes, remember? Not 10. I heard six from somebody to get from Mesquite to Salem. Now, Phyllis, of course, the interstate's closed and then three hours from now, you're still sitting on the bridge. Hey, 500 students you just affected, not 150.
Danielle Pishval, Salem Township. You guys really need to reevaluate all the people, all the different kids that are in the different areas, okay? You have other kids that are in Salem Township that don't even go to Salem, like my daughter. My daughter can't even go to Salem, okay? You have, you wonder why so many kids don't go to Mesquite? Because they have IEPs. And I'm so tired of you guys saying IEPs. Yes, these kids have disabilities. Stop putting them down, okay? Basically, these kids are great. These kids mean the world to parents. You have no idea. And basically, yes, these kids have IEPs, but you need to reevaluate where these kids go because there's kids that don't go to Mesquite that much because you have West Berwick that's so overcrowded. Because they have to go there for life skills because you only have one life skills teacher. They come here because you only support autism here for Salem. It's going to cost $5 million just to make that cafeteria bigger. Why? Would you spend so much when you can just take care of Mesquite and just make it better? I don't understand. Especially what he was saying about the budget? That just blew my mind. I was like, wow, I couldn't believe the numbers. I was like, wow, you know? And it's like, how can you guys even think of affording that much more money, you know, to make that cafeteria bigger when you already have a school that already has the roof done? You know? I mean, think about it. I, I just, you know, you guys said that you would do better and, you know, I voted for some of you because you said you would do better, and I'm very disappointed that I voted for some of you because you really made me upset. You will never be voted again.
Um, I'm just going to speak, it's a, I'm just going to speak really quick from here if it's okay, Nicole Zikruski, Mesquite Township. Uh, we keep talking about data, we don't have the data. Mark, you're saying we have the data to support doing this, and I, I kind of need to argue the other way. I too have talked to dozens of teachers, high school, middle school, West Berwick, Mesquite and Salem. I don't hear the same sentiments from the teachers that you're hearing right now. Um, when we look at this and we say our scores are failing, I've been on a data team for 15 years, scores are failing, they're awful. I, I will be the first to agree. We're some of the lowest in the entire IU. I don't think taking our kids from Mesquite and putting them in other buildings is the answer. And like you said, it's going to, class sizes will be increased if we bring kids over. You're absolutely right, but it decreases this class sizes in West Berwick and it decreases the class sizes in Salem. And yes, Mesquite class size might go up a little bit, but they can afford that tiny bit while we are helping the other kids. That will increase test scores. That will help the teachers out. That will give them what they need. Our data shows failed mergers. Every time we've merged, the scores have dropped significantly. So I am expecting to see another drop in scores, a pretty big one at this point because we've not been successful at it, at, at any point. And I really am disappointed that we are not talking about curriculum first. We have to figure out where the falls are in our curriculum, strengthen that, and then we can talk about these things. This is truly letting our kids down, it's letting our merger down, it's letting our community down, and I think we're going to continue to see falling scores.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Frye, I'm from Mesquite Township, and I actually teach here in the district. And I just wanted to point one thing out when we were talking about the number of teachers, classroom size. Our contract with 211 teachers includes guidance counselors, not in a classroom, dental hygienists, I don't know where we have one of them, but it also includes nurses, librarians, speech therapists, the deans of students, we're added under our last contract negotiation with you. They are not classroom teachers. Our number is nowhere near 13 in a classroom. I wish it was because there's some kids I think I could help a lot better if I had more attention to give them. So I just wanted you to clarify that that contract, that 211 number is a little bit skewed because they're not in the classroom.
I'll show you where I got it.
And that's fine.
It's a breakdown with the nurses and everything.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
The 193 is actually for the teachers.
I, and I don't know that.
What does it weigh to that?
I don't have that number on my...
I think that would be correct, that's, that's, your dean of students is doing it.
Well, I didn't, I was against them from John.
Your dean of students, you have, you have school psychologists, you have speech pathologists, they are not classroom teachers. I would say they're somewhere in 170 something.
Well, that'd be easy to find out.
Yeah. And then, you know, definitely, I think the specialized component, we do have a high percentage, we typically seem to run somewhere around 20, 25 percentage. And those kids do need more attention, less kids to teacher reach down. So, you can't compare necessarily obvious to others if you don't have that same makeup.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lauren Miller, I'm from Hall and Zach Township again. Um, and Jesus Christ is my Lord and Savior, I love Him with my entire heart. I, I'm an active member at NC Church in Berwick. And it's timely that I'm speaking on this right now. So, um, one of the Bible verses that I aim to live by is the first commandment, to love the Lord your God with all your heart, all your soul, and all your mind, and to love your neighbor as yourself. One of the awesome Bible studies that our pastor is preaching on right now is he's talking about in First Samuel. Now, it's a really big book, it's pretty intense, so I'm not about to teach you all that right now. But one of the things that happens in this book is God lets the Ark of the Covenant go. And he does it to teach them a lesson. And, um, so I, I wanted to, you know, challenge Berwick and Nescapack to recognize and remember that we are neighbors. And, um, you know, at the end of the day, you know, if Berwick made the decision, whatever, if Berwick wants to even change their decision to be thinking about, are you loving your neighbor as yourself? You did the best you could to love your neighbor as yourself. Because whether Jesus Christ is your Lord and Savior, whether we believe in God or not, there are and will always be consequences to not loving your neighbor. And so we also need to take time to think about what will the consequences be for ourselves. Um, I've been blessed to have been able to hear my neighbors' voices. Some of them are very upset. And, um, I want you to know that I, I care and warm with you for that. And, um, I want to challenge you to, to, can you step into a place of forgiveness? Jesus says, uh, "Lord, forgive us, they do not know what they do." And He also says, "The greatest are those who forgive their enemies." And so if Berwick is your enemy tonight, or if Berwick will continually be your enemy in the future in your heart, if you can forgive them, uh, I wanted to share that with you. Um, and yeah, so I thank you, I thank you guys for what you have done and, and the choices that you've decided to make, the hard work. You have prayed and seeked, seeked for wise counsel in your decision making. God loves every single person in this room, um, no matter what choices we choose. Um, but to continually challenge every single person in this room to, to challenge you to look at yourself and ask, um, am I loving my neighbor? Um, what can I do to love my neighbor no matter what, even if they hurt me? Um, because I'm probably gonna live in Walthallton for a really long time, but I'm still gonna wanna serve Berwick with my whole heart. And I'm, uh, I'm an activist citizen in Berwick and I'll continue to be. And, uh, you know, you can travel the world, you can travel these amazing things, but there's nothing like serving, nothing like serving your community and being a positive impact for your community. So, that's all I wanted to say. God bless you guys.
Nicole Marigan, Nescapack. I just wanna say I support the decision. It's not one that I wanted to hear, but I mean, I am, I run a business in town. You have to, you have to accept change and that's, but for my family, I'm asking, it sounds like Nescapack has been taking a lot of the agenda for quite some time now. So it sounds like the decision's been made for a while. So with that, I'm asking for planning purposes. You have 160 children plus that are gonna need to probably maybe rearrange some childcare. You know, I rely heavily on before and after care for my children so I can do my job. So I, I, I really hope that in the very, very near future, maybe the next meeting, that you are able to give the families, the teachers of Nescapack some confidence, what's the agenda, what's the plan? What are the busing schedules gonna be like? Because now I have to change my schedule probably instead of walking my kid two minutes down the road. What's the bus schedule gonna be like? Um, it's not just for me, it's for, you know, it's for all of the families. Um, our daily routine in the mornings may change. What are the lunch times going to be? What are the snack times going to be? My kids already come home and they're starving, you know? These are all things that just as a, as a family, like I just wanna know what, what's the plan going to be? Uh, busing, lunch schedules, uh, you know, for all grades, all grades affected. The bathroom thing, I'm very curious to see if you have enough, you know, if you're gonna be up to code with that. But I just, I really hope that, uh, there's a transition plan, um, that's communicated with everybody. So parents, students, siblings, teachers, support staff, that everybody feels comfortable going into this, that there truly is no divide, that it is, uh, it, I just don't, I just don't wanna feel a divide. You know, that, I think that's the biggest thing. I don't want my, I want my kids to feel accepted here. I want the teachers to feel accepted because we have our own little community and I just hope that we can all come together and that you guys have a good transition plan. Thank you.
Leah Zulinski, Nescapack. Um, I think tonight was a good test of character for some of the new board members. And I think maybe it's a good thing that we know early on who we can trust to keep their word and who will have to be leery of new teachers.
Miranda Costa, I'm from Walthallton. Uh, Mr. Eisenauer, you stated that six minutes from Nescapack over. Um, buses are dismissed at Nescapack at 3:20-ish. My kindergarten gets home at 4:20. Just so you have an idea, I don't know where you got your six minutes from, but...
Who matters?
Well, I'm not that. Did you consider Walthallton? You might be, excuse me, I'm talking, okay? Thank you. You might be doing six minutes from Nescapack to here, but that's not where she gets on and off the bus for her home. Okay? So, my question is now, what is the plan? That has always been our big question is, there is no plan. And like, some of you ran on that. And I get it, you changed your mind. Or it was a lie just to get a vote. I get it, it's politics. But our biggest gripe is there's no plan. So please, as, how many people have already stated? We need a plan. We need a plan and no kindergarten, or, should be on the bus for an hour. Thank you.
Your child gets dropped off at Nescapack, right? At their final destination?
Yeah, because we live in Walthallton.
From Nescapack to Salem Elementary is a six-minute ride.
Okay, that's, that's six minutes. But still, she's on the bus more than six minutes. So...
We can continue this after.
I, I can't speak...
Yeah, we can continue this after it's given us the work.
I can't speak for your student, for your child's bus, but some buses do transport VOTEC students. So they're first, they're sent to school and wait until the VOTEC bus comes. And she's one of them and I understand that, the bus is one of them, but it's... That can be like a 10 to 15 minute wait sometimes. Sometimes one time. That's still a long time. And somebody else can get out. I agree, but that's the reason. Sometimes it takes a little longer. I'm just pointing out that he was incorrect in saying six minutes. And we know that accidents happen and it blocks up 93. It happened on the, didn't it happen on the first day?
First day.
Yeah, the first day.
I'm not incorrect, Google might be.
And, and, uh, to add to her thing there, uh, add to her thing there, they are going to be working on the interstate eighty bridges between...
Next four years.
Yeah, for the next four years. Between Greenville and Cunningham.
Heavy traffic.
So we're gonna get another 10,000 to 13,000 per day through this, weeks. So, to think of that before you finalize the bus schedule.
I wanna ask a question. Carol Berger, Nescapack. Where are these bus stops gonna be for the children to go to? And don't tell me Nescapack's school because now it's no school. So where are the kids gonna be picked up in Nescapack? No answer?
Also, when you take into effect where the bus stops are going to be in Nescapack, is there going to be kids crossing roads they shouldn't be crossing by themselves? A lot of kids walk to school because their parents have already left for work or walk home with a sibling because nobody's home at home. We also have meeting the VOTEC bus. Where are they gonna meet the VOTEC bus if they're picking up kids at bus stops in Nescapack?
It's a gas station. I think it was that one, we have a gas station.
Just when I was like, right? Gas station. The formula by the... Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Arlinda from Nescapack. I just wanna tell all of you guys, if, if we can just make this transition to benefit the whole district, every student that's here. They need a better district to start with, no matter what. You guys are all the ones in charge here. Just do what's right for all of our students, every single one of them, across the board. And it all lies on your hands, so if we could do that, no matter what.
Anyone else? I think I saved something. I, I just wanted to speak personally on behalf of my own son. This is not an easy job. Nobody up here has anything to gain by this decision. What I said, what I said in the beginning, in November, to the newspaper, I was not in favor of the vote to close Nescapack the way it happened. We need to take a look at what has transpired since and make a final decision based on what is best for all of the students and what is financially responsible for the taxpayers. I went on to say, I want to have long-form back and forth discussion with our educators, financial advisors, on strategies for an equitable, equitable balance for all students regarding classroom size, cost per student and bringing fifth grade back to elementary. I did exactly that. I worked on this for 20 to 30 hours per week since November. This is not a paid position. Nobody up here wants to be criticized or slandered in the paper. It's not fun. It's not fun to be yelled at or lied about, but nobody up here lied about their positions. Maybe we actually looked at it and had the data and did what we thought was best for all of the kids. There's, 94% of the district is outside of Nescapack. I voted the way I thought was best for the majority of students. If you wanna disagree with that, that's fine. Don't question my character.
Either gang it or I'm walking. Come on. We gotta get some ready to executive session.
We have priorities. Sorry, uh, the next session were four discipline issues and, uh... Four, and two, and, one, two, three personnel.
Next meeting will be March 11th in this room. Motion to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?